Welcome to tonight's meeting of Greenville City Council. Nice to have you with us. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Gibson, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Do you want me to prayer? Thank you, Lord, for this opportunity for us to come together, help us to have open minds and open hearts. Help us as council members to have the wisdom to do what is best with this city and its citizens. Help this to be a productive exercise in your name. This we ask. Amen.
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 We'll call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Yep.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Will Bryson.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stoff.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of February 12th, 2024, which is then approved as submitted, and also hearing objections or anything?
None, so they are so approved. I'm going to change a little bit the order. Have a very, very special proclamation to read tonight. It's kind of unprecedented for us in many respects, but we have very special guests from the State Highway Department with us tonight. And I'd like to read the following proclamation. Kristi, you can remain seated. But good to have you with us. The proclamation reads as follows from Greenville City Council. Whereas Governor Nikki Haley appointed Kristi Hall to serve as Secretary of the Department of Transportation on July 2nd, 2015. And where Secretary Hall is a native of the upstate, graduate of Clemson University, and has served the state of South Carolina in various roles for three decades. And whereas Secretary Hall directed an agency of more than 4,500 employees after starting with the DOT in a district position following her graduation from Clemson University. Whereas in 2022, Secretary Hall's leadership swayed legislators to invest an additional $1 billion in our state road system. And where Secretary Hall quadrupled the amount of road and bridge work completed throughout our state and provided leadership during some of the state's most damaging natural disasters to date. Whereas Secretary Hall has earned the trust of lawmakers and citizens and has led the SCDOT through times of unprecedented growth. And whereas the city of Greenville concurs with our governor Henry McMaster in his assertion that, and I quote, "Secretary Hall will be remembered as one of the greatest transportation secretaries in the state's history." And whereas Secretary Hall will retire on March 30th, 2024, and will be succeeded by Secretary nominee Justin Powell, a South Carolina native, graduate of Walford College, and former employee at the city of Greenville.
Yes.
And whereas the city of Greenville wishes to publicly recognize Secretary Hall's years of commitment and service to the people of the South Carolina and looks forward to working along Secretary nominee Powell in his new role. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council, the city of Greenville, to express our sincere appreciation and deep, deep appreciation and gratitude for the service of Secretary Hall in this position over these many years. Congratulations, Kristi. Thank you.
Goodbye.
And those councilmembers wish to make some comments, but we also want a picture taken with you before you leave. So we'll do the comments first, but I also wanted to say upfront for all of you who didn't know. Kristi was assigned to the upstate and to Greenville, so to have a state commissioner who knew Greenville. We could total access, didn't have to explain where Afton Avenue was or anything else. She knew. She knew. And that means a lot when it comes to the all the kinds of road issues that come up during the course of any year. She's always been accessible, always been creative, always had a willingness to try to get to yes when the answer could easily be no. She would try to get to yes, and often did. Her breadth of knowledge, her experience, and the way she worked with the legislature as well as the city of Greenville is so deeply appreciated. So Kristi, thank you very much, and we will miss you.
There we are. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Matt, I'd love to make a couple of comments. Secretary, I've had the unique position of getting a front row seat to the last decade of all the wonderful things that you and your team has done. You know, they always say, I hear you say often, it's the team, it's the team. And I understand it's the team, but the team needs a leader. And you have an unbelievable leader. I've got a front row seat to that in the last 10 years. And Governor McMaster is right in his comments about being, you know, the best transportation secretary. I would contend in my generation of doing that, what I do for a living. You've been the most impactful member of his, of any governor's cabinet. I've seen the work that you've done from, you know, I know the resolution mentions hurricanes and natural disasters. And with your leadership, what that really means is, and then of course, you work on work zone safety. But hurricanes and ice storms and work zone safety, I feel like it's your leadership and your perseverance to get things done that literally has saved lives. I mean, literally, literally has saved lives. I'd also say that, you know, a number of years ago, I guess it's been seven, eight years ago, the General Assembly passed that motor fuel user fee. I think it was 12 cents. They would not have done that without having someone that they trusted to see that through. And I am convinced that without you in that position, that doesn't get done. But they looked at you, and again, I got the front row seat of that. They looked at you and said, we know that Kristi Hall can get this done. And I'll finally just end with this, that, you know, I, we talked about saving lives, but really also it's about impacting lives. And with your leadership of partnering with business community, of partnering with the ports, partnering with commerce, and then the citizens of South Carolina, the positive impact that you, I know you always look to your team. And yes, you have a great team, but the great team has a great leader too. And with your leadership, you have positively impacted so many South Carolinians. And on behalf of Greenville City and the mayor and others, we're just so grateful and blessed to have had the opportunity to have you in that position. So thank you.
Councilman.
I would like to, and I am going to say Secretary Hall. When I first met you, you were Kristi. And we were, we were having a situation with the highway coming through Southern Side. And the community was having knock down, drag out meetings, Department of Transportation. At every meeting they had for five months, I mean, the elderly people, the young people. We didn't want to talk to anybody. They said, we're in transportation the first day you came. And you talked to this community. It was old. We didn't know that one. Because people, before the governor appointed you, you were our Department of Transportation person. She went to people's houses. She talked to them and let them know. She made sure that they had to be moved. They were moved very carefully. They were taken care of like they were her own grandparents. So I'm just telling you, we will miss you. We will truly miss you because, as my mother said before she died, that God put you in that position to help us out. And I thank you so much.
We want a picture.
Oh, yeah, we got to help.
To vote on, move the resolution.
Let's get the picture done first. We'll get to the proclamation.
They probably made a human picture too.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, first of all, thank you so much for this honor. It's, it means a lot to me and certainly appreciate your expression of kindness and gratitude. I would say that my time here in Greenville was very formative to me and definitely influenced how I led the Department of Transportation. When I first came to Greenville, I was actually sent here on special assignment. Believe it or not, because we had a project that was in a little bit of trouble. It kind of feels like maybe a broken record.
They were hostile.
We had a project that was in trouble, and I was sent up here from Columbia at the time to try to ease the issues and work through and try to find good solutions. And it was through partnerships with the good people here in Greenville. Mr. Mayor, appreciate all the passion that you had for the aesthetics of the Hemmer Gateway coming into town. And Councilmember Fleming, certainly remember spending time with you and Chandra Dillard out in the community, talking to folks and working through issues. It certainly has, as I said earlier, it really, those lessons and relationships and the understanding of value of those relationships carried me throughout my entire career. And it really started here in Greenville. So thank you for that. Thanks again for this honor. I'll certainly treasure it forever. Thank you.
We'll do the presentation of the resolution first.
Yes, and council, we had a few squinters errors. You do have a final one sitting in front of you. So it will be as amended.
Okay.
A resolution to express appreciation for the service of South Carolina Department of Transportation Secretary Kristi Hall and to congratulate Secretary nominee Justin Powell.
So move second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those ayes have. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Back to our agenda. We have, Madam Clerk, who do we have to speak to council tonight?
Yes, sir. First up, we have Joe Farmer. Mr. Farmer.
Sir.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. I direct your attention to the Development Code, specifically Section 19-6.2.16, Section A, Line 2, which states, "Historic property seeking a special tax assessment for rehabilitated historic property under any Article 4 of the City of Greenville Code of Ordinances in which is not already listed on the National Register of Historic Places or within a preservation overlay district at the time of application must receive local landmark designation prior to approval of special tax assessment. This needs to be relocated to Section 19-6.2.17, Section 1, Line B, and remove the words "local landmark designation," to be replaced with "historically significant structures." This change would place the final approval on taxing with council rather than a printed board who has no background in taxing. I came to you six months ago and told you about them authorizing Unity Park, Hughes Investments, $20 million tax assessment frees for Pickleball Court. Well, last month, they authorized Spinks Development a $32 million tax assessment freeze to build a convenience store on Main Street. That's $52 million of tax assessment that they've frozen in the last six months for two projects that are not historic, just happened to fit the definition required. Now, this last meeting, the five members of the board, one had to recuse himself. I bring this to you because it not only affects the city of Greenville, but this is taxes, and this is assessment that affects Greenville County, the school district, Greenville City, Greenville Tech, the library, and the arena. Because all level mileage against tax assessments. Every four members that were eligible to vote, the vote was three to one. During the hour-long discussion of this project, the chairman polled the board to find how they would vote. It was evident it was going to be two to two. At that point, city staff conferred with the attorney in a five-minute recess, had a sidebar with the chair, then they came back and had a discussion and wound up voting three to one in favor after being told a two to two vote would be a denial. During this same period, the app was asked if they would like a deferral to the next meeting. Since they'd already started the project, they said no, they wouldn't, that they would be building this project whether it got this special tax assessment freeze or not. The net result was, you just got a $32 million tax assessment freeze that's going to affect all these entities that was not needed. This project was going forward anyway. I ask that you change this section so that you have final say on taxing and not disappointed board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jack Logan.
My name's Jack Logan. I live at 5051 Old Thuster Road in Greenville, South Carolina. To this council for the last two or three days, as you most of you know, there was one in this room. That was the SEC Women Basketball Tournament. And our police done a magnificent job. And I was telling the city manager, I can't be more pleased because myself and Nita Patton, our nonprofit, we stand against gun violence and violence. And on yesterday, in witnessing our police responding so quickly to the violence that could have escalated more than what it did, they are to be commended. Not one comment on national television today said any harm about Greenville Police Department.
Thank you.
Since all the violence go across the country, there's events, the first people targeted is law enforcement. But we can't say this about Howard Thompson and the Greenville Police Department. And I was telling our great city manager yesterday through an email how proud I was of the police department. And I said this to her in the email, and I think most of you got it. We have got to withdraw the chief's retirement. Whereas no other chief can come into a city and operate it the way he has done a good job. And with permission, can I make this presentation to the chief?
Yes.
Chief Thompson.
He's always up to it.
The chief, we really thank you for doing a good job yesterday, and it could have escalated.
Yes, indeed.
It could have escalated, Mayor, but it was so good, and I saw those officers so quicker than I am. And they responded and kept peace and people safe, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, we have, thank you very much. We have the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion second. We'll call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Bryson. Councilmember Stoff.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Regular agenda, 14A.
And administer a mandate, Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville and incorporate text updates into the Greenville Development Code recommended during the six-month code review process.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Second in vinyl. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoff. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you to our planning staff. Appreciate all the good work. 15A.
And administer a budget of $500,000 in the wastewater fund for the Red Street Sewer and Storm Replacement Project.
So move.
Second.
Second.
I have a question.
Question.
It's Patricia.
Patricia.
So we're doing a general, was this a grant fund or we're just shifting over from general fund to?
It's a grant that we receive from Greenville Water.
Okay, okay. So the total project cost is almost $2 million, 1.9. And we get a grant from Greenville Water to subsidize 500 of that. But the rest comes out of our solid waste fund.
Correct, and it was already underway, our wastewater fund.
Our wastewater fund, which operates at a deficit now anyway?
Not the wastewater fund.
Okay. Our solid waste fund does.
Correct.
And no solid waste money is part of this or?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Okay.
This is non-solid waste.
Yep. Liquid waste.
Liquid waste.
Since you brought it up.
Okay, yeah, that's the water system account. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Bryson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoff. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. B. No, no new business. That's right. 16A.
Yes, sir. A resolution to approve a ministerial recorder under Chapter 22 municipal court for the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville.
So move. Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you very much. I have Angela here, and would you stand up, please, ma'am? And she's going to enjoy what she's doing. She's already working that, Mayor. So thank you very much for your awesome work.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Judge, 16B.
A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding and automatic aid agreement between the City of Greenville IV and on behalf of the Greenville Fire Department and the Public Service District for the certain emergency incidences in the designated areas of the city and the Portier Public Service District.
May I motion second?
So move.
Second. Chief, go ahead and say it.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of council, this is another auto agreement we spoke about to ensure the best service to all citizens, both our citizens and our neighboring jurisdictions, that reciprocal agreement that we send the closest resources to help anyone in need.
Cool. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. 16C.
A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding and automatic aid agreement between the City of Greenville IV and on behalf of the Greenville Fire Department and Duncan Chapel Fire Department.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Same thing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, chief. Thank you for good work on all that, too.
One quick question. Are you working on agreements with the other special purpose districts as well?
We have, we actually have agreements that have been sent out to Parker District in the past. And also, we have currently one out with Belmont as well, and they're reviewing that also this time.
Great.
Thank you.
16D.
A resolution to approve an agreement between the City of Greenville and Greenville County to clarify rights and responsibilities regarding certain properties located in the city that are or shall be included in multi-county industrial and business parks.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close ayes have it. Thank you very much. All righty. You worked us to death from three o'clock for now. How many separate items did we?
Twenty-five.
Seventeen, everybody? It was more than half a dozen. Okay. Three. Please.
I think I have a couple of themes that I would like to question on tonight. First, I want to thank Visit Greenville and our public works staff, our park integration team, our engineering team, our fire department, and our police department for all they did to make this a wonderful weekend for SEC basketball in Greenville. Also, many thanks to Bedfall and the Vons Support Office for their continued success and all they do to bring top-notch events to our community. You're very, very blessed to have them doing the things that they are doing for our community. I would also like to say a special word of thanks to our Greenville Police Department. I think we've all seen or heard what happened towards the end of yesterday's title game. But our officers in particular, Dominique Dawes, Joey Galt, and Michael Dean, did a great job of handling a very tense situation. Their quick response helped prevent further issues and kept everyone in the arena safe. They exhibited great teamwork, and we are very proud of their service. Please join me in thanking these officers and all of our Greenville Police Department team that worked to keep our community safe this weekend. Now, the other one is that I'd like to recognize our parking team because I have received two angry emails last week about parking in downtown Greenville, but it wasn't related to anything to our city parking team. And so I would like this moment, if I could, to just remind the public that we offer several parking options in 10 parking garages and five public lots to start our customers' needs. We have monthly parking for those who frequent downtown. We have hourly and daily parking for visitors and local citizens. That's safe and affordable. The first hour's free. Second hour's $2. It increases to a daily maximum of $7. We offer event parking for only $5 and $10 for arena events. Our facilities are well painted, they're clean, they're very well lit, and they're monitored 24/7 with active personnel. Our garage equipment is state of the art, and we have personal real-time service that is available at the touch of entry. We also have in-depth that has real-time availability information. And all of this wouldn't be possible without the great personnel of our Parking Services Division. They're a wonderful customer service, service oriented staff for our city. They're always there. I call all the time and say, oh, I forgot my key, or I can't get out. They're very, very wonderful people. And I just want the public to know that there is city parking downtown and that there's not city parking downtown. And that the work that our city team does with parking is, I think, just top notch. They can't compare. Yes, councilmember.
Yeah, I just want to add that I have received, when I, when I receive complaints about parking, including from one of your employees, when I get, we both know, when I receive complaints about parking, inevitably, it goes back to one of those parking garages that we don't own. So that has happened many times in the last six months, as a matter of fact.
So thank you, Phil Foster, for you and the work that your team does to provide great, affordable, and safe parking options for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
So, yes.
Good seeing you.
All right. Have fun. See you later. Oh, yes, very good.
So we told them we're flying to Atlanta.
Okay. Who flies to Atlanta?
We're flying to, I know. So we're flying to Atlanta to.
Sounds good.
And so we're flying, dressed up in arrogant, t-shirts. Yes.